Good evening, it is low after 6:30. I will call Monday, March 30th. We need to order a roll call, Joel.
I'm here.
Leah, here.
You.
Sarah is going to join shortly.
I'm here.
It's good to be here. And Nola is in the field this evening. I am here, Dr. Slender.
Here you go.
And please turn me to the floor.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to be finished?
Mount Auburn Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Number two, approval of the agenda. Motion by Carly, seconded by Adam. All those in favor of our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of February 17th regular board and executive meeting minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Joel, seconded by Tom, to approve our February 17th regular board and executive meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our February 26th Special Board of Education Executive Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Carly, to approve our February 26th Special Board of Education Executive Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board. Building good news in student spotlight. Mrs. Johnson.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you all?
Good tonight.
You ready? I'm sitting on the spot. You can sit there, okay? Can I brag about you though? So, this is my friend Evan. And so what I do is again at the, every time we are up for our student spotlight, I put it out to the entire staff, sports staff, teachers, everybody. Now they're chance to nominate someone. With all the nominees, in looking at what Mrs. Rowitz wrote about Evan, talking to recess teachers, lunchroom teachers, our art music, Viad, all of those folks, Evan wasn't shitting. So let me tell you a little bit about Evan. So, his classroom teacher, Mrs. Rowitz, nominated him with the following words of praise. Evan Markline is a wonderful role model at the ELC PC. He knows what's expected and he strives to do his best in everything he does. He is kind, polite, friendly, helpful, and has a genuine concern for others. His gentle smile lets those around him know he's happy to see them. He has a quiet demeanor yet he participates often in class where everyone can learn from his thoughts and ideas. He is a good friend others enjoy playing with and interacting with. You can count on him to be respectful, responsible, and ready throughout each day. Evan is a shining example of what it means to be a Montbourn. Thank you, Evan.
Can we give a round of applause for Evan? See all these people who love you and care about you to celebrate this special night with you? Congratulations. Thank you for being the very best of our Vikings. And as a small token of our appreciation, we have this certificate for you. Do you have a special place maybe in your bedroom that you could put that up and be reminded of how you make others' lives so much happy? And as a small token of appreciation, we also have this Viking pin. And do you think I could give you an extra one at least to give to your teacher, Mrs. Rowitz, who's also a very special person just like you? Wonderful. And last but not least, can we take a picture together, everybody outside? Maybe out this side. There's a nice bulletin board over here. That would be sure terrific, wouldn't it? Let's do that. Come on over.
Hi Leah.
Leah!
I think somebody knows when I go.
He's not right now.
Yeah, Sarah. How was the move?
You know, the last time I was in the state of Montana, I was still in my thirties. This year, definitely realized that. Tanner helped us on Friday for like half the day. Henry actually came over.
I know, he was like, I just came off from Sarah. I was like, what?
He was like, I think you know. I moved my baby grand piano. Tanner and his friends have moved that thing.
Bless their hearts. But no.
Did you basically take that to the second floor?
No, I just put it in the garage.
Oh, okay.
It's like, Mom, I'm holding that up through not many stairs.
People need to build a house around one of those things.
So I see Dr. Schreiber. Asking to introduce his family.
Yeah. You don't have to do anything. You just have to be here. She did. She did. You as well. My goal is everyone I'm with Amy is to get in line before her to speak because she's so good. You never want to follow her.
Is that true?
Yeah, it's true.
I feel tall. I gotta hang up the little kids' phone.
You should never be with that. I think that's the end.
Imagine my shoes and stuff. Like, there's gamers.
Rachel, we were just talking about my move when I was talking about my piano. That Roland came over and helped us one day.
Yeah.
I'm like, wow. So Roland, she took my old kitchen table and chairs and then my kitchen stand for her house.
For her college house.
And I'm like, let's just send this piano over to Rachel.
No, thank you. I'm good. My son said it was heavy.
I'm surprised Roland didn't just move it herself. Put it on her back and she was...
She was leading the boys. She's bossy.
Leadership skills.
She's so good for Tanner.
That's why she's perfect for Tanner. She had to use him a lot.
We had some good news also from the ELC PC.
Yeah, a couple things that I wanted to highlight. Just a food drive. Even our littles can make a big difference in our community. So we spent some time gathering items and although they didn't count everything, it was an entire truckload that they took and contributed to neighbors helping neighbors. So that's thanks to the leadership of Heather Hurley, Kayne Moore, who are both kindergarten teachers, and our social workers, so Feed My Camp. So they did a great job and our kids had a lot of fun breaking in items and watching the pile of world and know that they're making a difference in our community. And that's part of one of our district pillars, if you will, is kind of that service of others. So we were excited to do that as an ELC and PC. This week is Read Across America Week. So we are celebrating the love of reading. Every day we have a different theme, from wearing your favorite outfit to tomorrow's superhero be a Viking day. So you can wear your Viking stuff. We have our big assemblies tomorrow to give out our PBIS trophies on top of it all. And then ending the day of wearing shirts with words. So we can just read each other. So hoping families aren't going out and spending any money, things that they have around the home, but again, another way. We're also doing Drop Everything and Read, which we haven't done in a really long time. So we're doing that at different stop spots through the week and even demonstrating as adults that we love to read. Kids don't need to watch TV very much. It's important. And then just continuing to support my amazing teams. I am so proud. Our collaborative teams have been working really hard on our CKLA curriculum. Sitting around the table weekly in their meetings with the problem solving and planning they're doing together is really paying off. The conversations we're having, something we ended up doing kind of last minutes that are really from my first grade team about is we had some needs that we needed to serve. And so we ended up actually dividing our team based on some of the needs and now more kids are being served based on their flexibility and resilience. So half the group is doing number corner while the other group is doing a camper RTI block and then vice versa. So we're looking at that model potentially moving in a different direction, but it's serving more students and meeting these where they're at.
And if that were not enough, Principal Johnson has assembled a really remarkable team of professionals to go on a tour next Tuesday. Can you tell everyone where you're going?
Oh boy. Jog memory. Okay, we are headed to go see two renovation or additions in one brand new building. So we have a whole team that's headed on a bus. We are starting up in New Claris and then heading to Edgerton for two remodel additions. And then we're ending in Fitchburg in a brand new facility. So our hope is to ask questions like, you know, what are you so thankful you did? And what are you regret not doing? Some of my colleagues have already reached out to people they know in some of those places to find out, for example, the big hot topic, kindergarten, should the bathroom be in the classroom or not? We don't know what we don't know. And so that's just making sure we're asking questions, taking photos of things that we think would be intriguing to pursue. It's so funny, between many of us as colleagues who travel for basketball, we've all been taking pictures of, you know, different spots that we seem like, that would be intriguing. I even got a picture of a slide that a school passed on the second story down into the cafeteria. Right? Not sure that that's the plan, but there's so many amazing ideas out there, right? Something for us to take a look at, so.
Keep up the great work. Please extend our gratitude to your amazing team.
I absolutely will. Thank you for supporting our student today. And we had a bunch of kids who were nominated. And so I go see each one of them to let them know their teacher had something very, or an adult at school had something very special for them and they get a red token from me and just making sure that they know that they're doing great stuff and want to keep it up. So, thank you. I think PBIS could go through the roof if there was an option. You could go down the slide. You've got so many tokens. You just need to have a close, like a way to lock it. Not both ends. Just support. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, three B, citizens' comments.
What kind of we have news? You guys who signed up tonight first is Mrs. Schenfer.
Hi everyone. Thank you for having me back. As I told you two weeks ago when I was here, members of PFLAG and supporters of PFLAG will be at each narrating from now until we're using Word for them. So I just want to introduce Mary and Carolyn and Lynn and Christine. They're all here, supporters of all of our children and we're here to support you and to keep our ears open. Just to see what's happening. Welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're pleased to welcome Mrs. Anta.
Okay, hello again. My name is Anne Bronford. People that haven't, that weren't at the previous meeting, I am the mother of an eighth grade student, Gina, who will be at the high school next year. And I just wanted to share another perspective that I have. I am, I, my background is an educator. I have a master's degree from Albarn College, which is a leader in standards-based education. In 2009, I had the opportunity to shadow English classes at a really high-performing EBG, evidence-based grading high school called Stevenson High School in Lincolnshire. I just wanted to bring your attention to some of the great things that Stevenson High School in Lincolnshire is doing that's helped them be so successful. One thing that they're doing is they have a learning center where they have certified tutors. The learning center is available after school. When students are struggling in a class, they can go to the learning center during the school day or after school and get help from a certified tutor. And wow, that's gotta be expensive. Stevenson High School also has 4,500 students. So, I mean, and they're in the Chicago area. So there's industry with that as well, as far as the tax base goes. Another thing that Stevenson does is they have this really like laser focus on standardized test scores. So if students score low, like if there's reluctant reader who takes their standardized test like 15 minutes, they might get a score that doesn't represent their true ability. And then they might get put in a reading class where they need extra help. And this reading class would actually be an additional period. It's called Reading for Academic Success. And it takes the place of one of their electives. It's not cool to punish kids for getting little test scores, but the fact that if they need extra help, they get it during a period that they don't quite have an elective motivates them to do their best, and show their true potential on their tests. Also, they've got these advanced classes that even freshmen can take. So kids who know like, oh, I want to be successful. I want to be an engineer. I want to do this, I want to do that. They really try their standardized test so that as a freshman, they can get into advanced level classes. So I just wanted to bring up that idea that, you know, the label that you put on a grade, you could call it a four, or you could call it an A, or you could call it an extending, or you could call it a C, or approaching, or two. It really doesn't matter. We really want to focus on like what great things schools are doing.
Thank you so much.
All right, three C's, school news. Should I help you to start?
Of course, we send our well wishes to Nola, who I was feeling a little under the weather today. So I'm sure she would have probably focused on the great work of our girls and boys' basketball teams. Just had a wonderful run this past weekend. And we're grateful for the way in which they represent us both on and off the court. I want to also acknowledge the great work of our Science Olympiad team. They just competed at regional competition. And Mrs. Tullson, who's one of our newer teachers here in the district, has just done an exemplary job of leading the charge. I think I saw close to 15 students participate. And as you know, that's quite a bit of a commitment on the parts of our students. I'd be remiss, of course, if I didn't just focus on the high school at the elementary level. I just want to talk about the power of our parents and community. What they did to pull an audible on Friday night's activity was just nothing short of amazing. And they were fortunate to marshal their resources when they had a bit of a setback with their annual fundraiser and had a wonderful movie night with popcorn and good food and fellowship. And seeing all of the young people dressed in their little PJs made me wish I could have my kids back again. Now they're 27, 28, and I don't want to see them in their PJs. But just those little faces, they were so excited and they were singing along with the movie scene and it was just really intriguing. So thank you to the parents who put that on. And I want to extend a note of personal gratitude to our very own clerk, Leah Lipska, who was instrumental in that effort. Next time we meet as a board, we'll have the opportunity to welcome a number of our artists whose work was on display over at the Historium. And if you're interested in seeing some additional artwork, tonight, the middle school has all of their artwork on display. If you were to go towards the gymnasium, gosh, I wish I had half the energy or half the ability, I should say, of those young people. They really truly are remarkable and I can't wait to celebrate our young people. And then last but not least, a personal invitation to all of our community members to two special events around The Anxious Generation. You may recall that's a book that we've been reading communally. And this will take place at the Mountbourn Public Library on March the 18th. We're really looking to get people's feedback about the book itself, but then how that book should inform our district's policies, procedures, routines. Might that be differentiated at the elementary, middle, and high school? Ultimately, we'd like to have a recommendation to the Board of Education at some point in April. April 2nd, though, will be a second follow-up evening for those interested in which we are bringing a doctoral student in from Ohio State University, whose area of expertise is in the topic of play-based learning as well as a use of cellular devices to inform instruction and mental health. So a lot going on at the home of the Vikings, but a lot of good stuff, as you can see. Tom, you had a visit recently, didn't you, to the intermediate center?
I do. I have some other things first that I'd like to share as well. I can touch on boys' basketball. They have their playoff game this Friday. Also, this Friday, the fourth grade will have their music program at 2:00 p.m. Also, next Monday, I believe, is the high school orchestra will be performing on 311 through this Monday. From the state wrestling, congratulations out to Eli Meyer, who finished third place at 165 pounds in the state wrestling. So that's awesome for him. I believe there's a bingo night next Friday, two weeks on March 14th at the Red Mouse. That's for PTO. I give a, one last shout out to, I'm gonna probably butcher her name and I apologize for that, but Delena Niceone. She has a part piece that made the Young Art exhibit at the Museum of Contemporary Art on State Street in Madison. So that's really impressive and congratulations out to her. I guess, yeah, and I'll go into, I was able to spend a half a day at the intermediate center and I visited four class periods. I started out in Mrs. Lee's third grade class. And they were starting a new unit, what was called What is Light? And the kids had to start out describing what light was and light sources. And I thought it was kind of interesting where they, you know, came up with some ideas, you know, basic ideas of sun, light bulbs. But some of them had some more interesting ideas like laser pointers and of course, lightsaber. And then they went into discussion why light is important. During the discussions, they used their whiteboards. They took turns reading sentences. And it was really interesting to see the, how the kids really wanted to participate. And they were patient with kids that maybe couldn't, couldn't share it as well as others. A special note that happened during my time in that class, two fifth graders came in during the later portions of the class. And they were coming in every day during their recess to help the third graders. And I thought that was a really nice program that I didn't know about. What a great, great thing that Vikings do to kind of help each other out. From there, I went to Mrs. Horace and Mrs. Dowar and Mrs. Claire's class. And they were just starting to research volcanoes on a way to how to make research papers to paraphrase and scan word. And that was really interesting. And again, the kids took turns reading off of their documents and sharing. And then they transitioned to decimal learning, tens and hundreds, on their individual whiteboards. And they were really quick about it. So each one had their whiteboard and the teacher would say something. They would have it up before they could even read it, how fast they were. In that class, there was one controversial moment when there was an announcement for the entire school where recess was restricted to the blacktop because of the snow melting. This was pretty disturbing to a lot of kids that like climbing. From there, I went to fifth grade to Mrs. Dowar and Mrs. Mauer's class. And that was very interactive to start the learning with mixed fractions related to distances and multiplication. And again, the kids were really involved and attended it. Then they had a breakout session where the questions got more difficult, more individualized to where the kid, individual students were. The teachers and myself, we kind of went around and helped kids if they needed it. One individual really had a difficult problem. And it stumped me for sure. He had to find the surface area of a cube and he was only giving, given very little information about it. And it stumped me, I didn't know how to do it. And then we had to go with teachers. And also, when I was in that class, I was lucky enough to see Claire Lindy, one of our high school seniors. She came in and she did, was part of the program of like a T U, basically. So yeah, so that was something interesting. Then finally, I went to Mr. Schirz and Mr. McGivern's Health and Fire class. And they were teaching badminton basics. And they let me play a little bit. It was nice, the kids enjoyed me playing with them for a little while. And then we went into more of a health class and we learned basics on skeletal system. And it was all really good and the kids were really well behaved. And I was impressed with the structure in each class and the pace that they were moving. So it was really a good visit. And I felt really lucky that I was able to participate in a half, half a day only, but it was still really great. After that, I snuck out as the buses were coming just to check, kind of check out how the badge system worked. So I was able to see kids coming off of the buses using their badges and then switching to their final destination bus. The badges worked really well and the kids were really smoothly using it. So just thought we shared all that.
That's awesome, Tom. Thank you. Anybody else have to...
I do. I just wanted to mention that I was at solo ensemble here at the high school on Saturday. And I think it's, it's something to note that a lot of other districts in the state, they get together with multiple districts at one school to do solo ensemble. Mountbourn does not because we have so many kids that participate. So there was just so many kids, band, orchestra, and choir students. It was great to see so many kids there. So yeah, and I would give, I want to give props to the music teachers throughout the district who are there, the ones who are accompanying these students and work with them beforehand the ones who are accompanying these students and work with them beforehand and then are running around back and forth to different rooms and know where they've gotta go to meet each student to make sure they're on time for playing piano for them. And then also on that note, just to note, next week, Wednesday, at Brick's at 6 o'clock, there is a trivia event that is being hosted by our 3 high school music teachers. And they will be the hosts. And that is a fundraiser for the London Music Trip. And then next week, Thursday, the 13th, if you need a treat, head over to Dicky's Sticky because they will be donating a portion of the funds from that day to the London trip as well.
One of my favorite parts of Saturday was seeing even some of our retired music educators there. Including many others in addition to our end dear Mrs. James.
The one thing I was gonna add was just the word of the music boosters.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
To promote that and to promote music in our school is really cool. And it's too bad that Noah's not here tonight because I got to see him play tuba in an ensemble. If you could get a call up by the judge.
Anybody else?
So also on Saturday, the middle schoolers went to science Olympiads. They didn't place for state, but there was a lot of medals. That's an old day. I was exhausted just getting text updates. So they did that. And then this Saturday at the middle school is the Southwest Wisconsin Jazz Festival. So if you are a morning person, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:40 a.m., there will be a little performance before the kids go in and have like master classes and stuff. So if you're up at Saturday at 8:00 a.m., that's a fun little thing you can do.
Is jazz soliloquy gonna get you ready for the day?
I don't know. I just know I have to have the child to school before 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. I've been informed a few times, it's before 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. So just, if you're an early bird, I think it'll be fun.
Joel, did you catch that? It's 8:00 a.m.
I'll text you to remind you. 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. That's all. Anybody else?
Moving on. Number 4, personnel transactions.
Not tonight.
Motion to approve.
Set.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number 5, consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to go out and discuss?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Leah, second by Sarah, to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number 6, discussion items. Our committee member reports. Tom, you wanna start with buildings, grounds and transportation?
Sure, I'd love to. We start off with the buildings and grounds update. We continue to be fully staffed. We handled the snow event that took place really well. Saltine continued to happen where the freezing fog happens each morning. Spring sports will be starting soon, so they're getting things prepared for that the best they can. They're keeping floors as clean as they can based on the amount of salt that's still getting stepped in on a daily basis. Switching to transportation, our new driver's fully licensed and will be taking over a morning route. We gave the bus drivers breakfast about two weeks ago and that was a really nice breakfast with the drivers. And some nice conversation was held with them for those who attended. The Wisconsin School Bus Regional Meeting is coming soon, this next week, and we will have a representative there for learning with what goes on at that meeting. We discussed the special needs transportation staffing. Currently, we have 3 new requests for transportation in that regard. And there's lots of things to consider based on the timing of pickups and drop offs with the specialized vans that we have. We might have to consider another staff member for that purpose. The mornings are currently booked, so it's a bit of a problem. The drop off times in the afternoon are kinda a little worse figure than in the morning. And then we switch to Dave Ream's long-term facility analysis, which will be brought to the full board in about a month or so. A couple of things of note on maybe on the short term. One thing that was noted was the middle school doors might need some work. And the playgrounds, particularly at the PC playground seats, are beginning vandalized a little bit. So one thing to consider might be more inviting, not only at that playground, but maybe at all the playgrounds to alleviate this issue. And make it more inviting for families to use them after hours. As we discussed earlier, on March 11th, we're gonna be touring other schools to kinda get a feel for how we might wanna approach our project. And our next meeting will be held in April, but there will be an update given at the end of March.
Joel, can I talk about my interview?
Sure. So as is part of the course with the finance committee, we talk about it. We vote on it at the full board table and then I give you a recap of what we voted on. So congratulations. You guys successfully passed budget revisions, which is wonderful. That's what we spent most of our last meeting talking about. A little bit of a deep dive on some of the things that's really there. Taxes receivable, or received, excuse me, went over that. Those look to be coming in just like we would expect percentage wise. It's where we would expect it to be with, what is it, about 70% of our taxes collected early and remaining about 25% later in the year. So, but those are right on where we expect them to be. And then we spent a little time with the budget calendar, again, talking about the fact that once the summer rolls around, even though we have no idea what the budget looks like, we need the budget anyway. So we're excited about that. But that's pretty much what the finance agenda was.
Carly, you want to talk safety and wellness?
Yes, of course. We met on the 17th of February, about 2 weeks ago. We had a couple of guests for this. First, we start off with Emily McGonagall, a middle school, high school social worker. And she was there to walk us through and talk a little bit about sources of strength. Sources of strength is a program at the middle school and the high school that really was a recommendation that came from the Office of Public Safety after May 1st. And also employs evidence-based strategies for, the original focus of the program was suicide prevention also. But it generally just has a lot of good practices for mental health and wellness overall. And the idea behind it is that the, you know, kids know when their friends are struggling before their teachers do. So we get a group of kids involved and give them the information, train them, and have them be influencers and leaders in the school. So they ask teachers to nominate leaders. We have about 30 students from each building and parental permission. And those students are often up to be, their first campaign is just kinda getting the word out about the campaign this week. They're gonna start working on a wall of hope, like a window display at the high school. And they're taking the lead on daily announcements, communication, social media. So it's really, really cool to hear some of our new members doing. With an equity update, our second guest, who, to Burke, was here, talked a little bit. We kinda recapped the family support event that had happened in the beginning of the month. And Sue shared some of the people's plans with us, including their June 25th event in Grundle. Mental health update, we talked briefly about the youth behavior survey that's coming around again this May. We had a brief update on Title IX, which the short answer to that is we're just kinda watching and waiting to see exactly what we need to change before we actually take any action on that at this point. And had a brief update on safety, that Brian was attending the drills around school as we were starting to practice barricading this month. So that's about it. Our next meeting is March 17.
Adam, did the villages park next to Coaster Street?
We did meet, yes. Nothing specifically schools related that came up there. Just more community aspects and some of the things that our kids are involved in that I'll just bring up right now. I think the big thing is that this was the ongoing conversation at that next meeting on the 4th Tuesday over the day right in front of me. I'm sorry, it'll be enabled here in this spot. We're gonna be looking at the, I'm getting my meetings mixed up. We are doing that one. Buildings and grounds is the one they're not doing. Parks and Rec is gonna be the 4th Tuesday in March to discuss the Grundle Park Playground. And we've gotten further down the lines with this with Beatty Gerber Leisure Products. Person named to try to talk about a lot of the different setups that we had. Not sure that we'll make final selections that night, but it'll be really close. So if anyone's interested in seeing how that comes together, I would say, please come out for that one in particular. There were a couple of different structures that, main structures that they were pitching at us. And both have some advantages, disadvantages. They're gonna come back with the same look again for us. A couple of different, you know, arrangements of different playground equipment that were to play. It's kinda more described verbally, but basically there's one main playing structure. There's a set of swings that'll be there, including some that are accessible and made for different ages as well. And then there'll be a separate play area for younger kids, so they're not totally consumed by the big kids running around and jumping around. And then there's a lot of like individual elements that are scattered throughout that. Basically, just to spread out the area a little bit and give kids a different interest or abilities, a chance to operate. So obviously, it's a really cool area. A lot of people use it. A lot of daycares use that in the area. So definitely come out and check it out, weigh in if you have any decisions that you'd like to weigh in on that. There is a, there's gonna be consideration of a storage facility at the baseball diamond. There's a need for more stores there by both the Zoma Fallow Committee and for the village. They're looking at either building out to a building, tearing down the existing structure there that is right by the baseball diamond at Grundle and replacing that with something that's a little more modern and has some kitchen facilities and whatnot that they could rent out in that space.
That will be a section building down the beach?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. And just making sure that it's up to par electric. They have to do some work on it anyway. And so they're kinda deciding which way to go about it. And then I think the only other element out there is like, it's still out of the ways in terms of defining the focus of it. But the Luckin Farm came up again and the usage of that and how that space will be used for parks. And they're gonna breed back 3 different choices for consultants to start working through some planning on that area. And again, it's like a 20 acre space that they have dedicated to breed space and play space. So that'll be something to monitor. And I know that, talked a little bit offline with Dr. Sulleno and Jessica about, obviously, there's overlap in facilities in this town, but there should be in terms of how we're thinking about school facilities and park facilities and to think through where we're falling a little bit short. Maybe some things that we wanna think about, even if not officially partnering with the village on, about making sure our feelings are known about what we'd like to see in that spot. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Where do we have for that?
That is at the village, at the municipal office, yeah. Was there 5:30, 8:30?
You said 4th Monday, so it'll be March 25th and then Tuesday.
Tuesday.
4th Tuesday.
4th Tuesday.
Yes.
It is, excuse me, it is March 25th, so Tuesday.
Okay.
Great.
Alrighty. Number 7, action item. We have 7 policies. No, wait, we have 6. We have 6 policies. Alrighty. Oh, Brian is not good.
Yeah, I'm happy to pinch it. Board members, this is just the second reading of a policy which we discussed at length. The last time we visited, in essence, giving our families an opportunity to seek an independent education evaluation and using the results of that to inform potential placement decisions in our district. And answer your thoughtful consideration. Or if Captain Anthony questions, you may hear.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Motion by Sarah, second by Carly, to approve revisions to board policy 342.13, independent education evaluation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number 2, first reading of consider revisions to board policy 664, cash in school buildings.
So Finance Committee a couple of months ago reviewed this policy. Our auditors have always been very supportive and appreciative of the process we use for securing money. And as you can imagine, over time, the amount of money that we collect becomes less and less because of online collection systems and so forth. Nevertheless, it's important to make sure that our policy reflects how we handle things on a day-to-day basis. The policy was very short this week, which is what we're essentially crossing over at the bottom of the street and inserting 3 small paragraphs to update it. Most notably is at the Finance Committee. We wanted to make sure that it was understood that when money was collected during the school day, that it needed to be submitted at the main office by the end of the day. So the question was, what was considered at the end of the day? And so in our minds, in my mind, I was thinking, okay, extreme. And that goes on on a Friday or Saturday night, right? Football game on a Friday night, the party event on Tuesday night or whatever. End of the day would be defined as when the last activity of that building is done. Or the day might be 10 o'clock on a Friday night. That money needs to be secured at the main office. We have a safe, for example, where it gets locked. And then when people look back at work the following week, it gets receipted and accounted for accordingly. So we're not changing how we do practice, but certainly reflecting the importance of making sure our policy is updated.
Anyone have?
Oh, Leah.
I have questions. I might have to go first, though.
Do I have a must-ear shell in there?
Well, I have kind of a Leah-ish one.
You go first.
The only thing I noticed, like when I was in the first 7 district, should probably be capitalized, capitalized everywhere else.
Does cash include checks? Or are we specifically talking cash?
Well, I would say both, but my word is cash. So I purposely have cash in there.
And then receipts and records of all cash transactions, that's not receipts like me. Like I give my check to the London trip. I don't get a receipt back. You're talking accountant-y receipts. Like you guys are putting in the ledger, debts and credits. Okay.
Receipts, deposits to the bank, receipts that come to the business office for consultation and recording.
I, the only reason I asked about checks is oftentimes I send a check and then 6 weeks later it gets cashed. So when I was like, it's gonna be deposited within 1 week. That's awesome. That's not.
Sounds like I have a lot of dating to do with some folks in the village.
It is notorious when I write a check that I think it lives in a, I don't know. I imagine, I imagine it goes in an envelope and then it goes from one building to another until it finally gets to your office and somebody does something with it. And it's, I don't know where it goes, but it's a very long time.
That would be slower than the point express. We don't want that.
It is very slow. Checks take a long time. That's why I was asking if it's checks and cash because that would be different. Then we drive into the bank, put in the vaults. Yeah, I'm with you. That was my, that was really it. All the shells and shills and mites and mates are great.
Julia, I can't.
So mine is the capitalizing, the, you didn't have any revisions to your square?
No, just third one. Anyone else?
Scott, can you remind me again, a couple of things we learned? Who this policy does or doesn't apply to? I'm trying to think if there's activities in the school that are separate from this because they go through a booster group or something that's offsite.
Schools, schools, not certain.
Okay.
Our, our vision, that is.
Got it, got it. And if it's a, just procedurally, like if it's a football game or a basketball game or when the main office is locked, does stuff get put in at drop offs or what do people do with the cash when they?
It gets locked in the main office.
Okay, someone has the key to it.
Okay. Very question.
That's it.
Motion by Adam, second by Sarah, to approve policy 664, cash in school buildings. This is our first reading. Who will call vote?
Yes.
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 Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Carly, yes. I'm also yes. First reading, revisions to board policy 527, employee grievance.
527, employee grievance policy. We will work on this over a few meetings in our personnel committee. The personnel committee just says our winner for folks on it. The best committee does have representatives from our support staff as well as our teaching staff. So we looked at this policy and they gave some great feedback as we worked through it. Originally, the policy that we have on the books right now hasn't been updated since 2012. So we're gonna need some revisions, not only to make sure that we meet some of the state statute requirements on non-renewal and things like that, but also just for usability, to making sure that employees know they can navigate the grievance process if they ever choose to use that. So I'm just gonna go through kind of by the headings here, since this is reworked quite a bit. It starts out with some definitions of what can be grieved. And then it goes right into the informal resolution process, working any grievance with their direct supervisor unless it's an issue of termination. Of course, non-renewals are not handled in that fashion either. If it goes to a formal resolution process and the informal resolution was not satisfactory, there are some different steps. First goes to human resources. There's timelines within the paragraph in which folks have to follow, as well as what information needs to be provided. And to file a formal grievance. Again, if that's not satisfactory, it goes to the superintendent, which is me there. Similar process, using the same criteria. And if that is not satisfactory, it goes to the impartial hearing officer. This section has more bullet points and details on how the impartial hearing officer is selected, what, how they can rule on the situation and such. But that is meant to be really impartial for both parties to give their ruling. If that does not, is not satisfactory to either party, then it will go to the board. And so it defines how a board makes that decision.
Excuse me real quick, Erin. Is that order of operations required by state statute?
There are lots of things that are required by state statute in this and how.
Um, there are lots of things that are required by state statute in this and how legal through.
I wanted to say that fondly.
Thanks.
Yeah, there is quite some legal references to this policy as, as noted on the back there, too.
Thank you.
Questions?
Erin, if I'm reading that right, on the informal resolution, if that does not take place, if someone doesn't file within that period of time, does that negate someone's ability to bring forward that issue further than?
Unless it's one of those other reasons.
Okay.
Like employee termination would not be an informal resolution process?
Right, right, okay. By statute, our employee grievance policy cannot allow for non-renewals or for employee termination that's set forth in state law 1922. Okay.
The only question I had on the B, the superintendent's step, is when I first read it, that first sentence reads as, it almost reads as if the HR person, the HR step is optional, right? Because of the way it says either party may advance the grievance beyond the human resources director. And so that's kind of what I thought as I was reading it, and it wasn't until I got a little further, I was like, oh, no, no, it's supposed to be like this, that, and this, that, and this. So I, I don't know, I'm curious if others stumbled on that too, or if it's worth rephrasing that.
Because it says an informal resolution.
Yeah.
So it looks like it's given.
Yeah. If we take out, would it make sense if we just said, if either part, just either party, we advance the grievance beyond the human resources director, then just take out, take out that proviso, if any informal resolution, does that read?
Or just if one resolves, either party may advance the grievance.
Or if an informal resolution and the human resources review just turns out to matter.
Any other questions?
This was better with faculty and staff, you said?
Yes. We agreed in that it's really wonderful, the language is a part of the process.
I think that, I think that I have my answer in reading this again, but that there was certain employees whose, like, though would be there. I saw it specified differently by employment contract at the end of the, you know, like, board's decision. Shall be majority vote of a court of present, unless specified differently by employment contract.
Yes.
I was just curious, just because I don't know, like, what positions that would entail?
We have some super majority, which.
Okay. In mine? The Jews?
I think it's only in states, but we have a super majority for some things.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Do you want to approve it with the revision, or do you want to bring it back?
I would love to approve this policy with the revision of paragraph 144.
Good second. Alright, motion by Joel, seconded by Carly, to approve revisions to board policy 527, employee grievance with a wanted noted revision. All those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Oh, it's a roll.
Yes.
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 Right.
Yes. And I'm also a yes.
Thank you, Erin. Sarah, first reading, consider revisions to board policy 323, ceremonies and observances policies.
Absurd.
Thank you. Get there, get there, almost done. So ceremonies and observances policies look at more secular observances and also religious ceremonies and observances. The, and the jodic ceremonies and observances. So what is new to this policy is the special observances section, looking at state observe days. So see that, click that, you know, the one on the screen. And then Joel had the idea that we should divide these out a little bit more, so, so we did that as well. This is that final version.
The administrative regulation indicates the state dates. Who who cashed the Pulaski was a day?
I'm not joking, I was about to tell when I looked into this, I was like, Lee Erickson goes to Pulaski.
It's great. Certain days of.
Did you guys have a monster calendar? I don't look over there.
Any questions for Sarah?
I just have a question. Students may be allowed an excused absence. It still counts towards their 10 days, right?
Correct. For which part?
The.
Is that what you're saying?
Religious.
A little bit.
Religious part?
Yeah. So students, the, actually, the part that's not in there, maybe like excused absence. So they, it's an excused absence, just like if you went on a. Like a parent request, right?
Yeah, which we don't really have, but we do have, it still confuses me.
Yeah.
So like, or like a college visit, but it still counts towards your absences. I guess college visits don't.
Yeah, in our, and if they can't, they're counted like on excuse or anything, so the board does excuse. Okay. That was my question. The clean version shows the, you guys have as well, shows the, what Joel had mentioned about the state federal ceremonies and services section and religious ceremonies and observances. So yeah, just adding that section and then reforaming slightly for clarity.
I would approve.
Oh, second. Motion by Adam, seconded by Sarah, to approve revisions to board policy 323, ceremonies and observances. Roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Carly?
Yes. I'm also a yes.
Alright, Sarah, we've got two more to go.
Okay.
Revisions to board policy 381, religion in classrooms.
Some slight adjustment of sectioning as well, a better section header, but then a couple of larger pieces. When a student needs accommodation, usually the students, the course content or materials, initially they have requests with both teachers. However, through WASB, they recommend it for better confidentiality for students. The family, that that request goes straight to the principal for review, and then the principal will, will put all that request in motion with staff, but they need accommodations. So that's the first piece. The second piece then is the appeal process. Our appeal, the appeal process that was listed didn't really mesh well with policy 411, which does have DPI as the last stop in policy 411, so we wanted to make sure that we were, we had consistency between the policies and practices, so that's why we have the changes to our policy for.
I have it. I would make a motion to approve.
I have a, I have a question on the, I don't know if I saw it addressed in here, but tell me if it is the first paragraph that talks about not compelling or pressuring a student to participate in a classroom, a devotional exercise in a classroom or district's curriculum products that extend to practices, to clubs, to other student gatherings outside of the classroom?
Does these schools in the policy, the policy title, looking just in general?
Schools and schools. Yeah, yeah, I mean, the sentence there, district staff will not promote religion, compel or pressure a student to participate in the classroom, a devotional exercise in the classroom, or in the district curriculum. So does that, I'm just making sure that extends to, I don't know, a coach that is leading a practice.
I was gonna say, I thought, as I was reading it, I was asking that question too, but I thought I saw somewhere out in here where it refers.
There's a specific, specific section on music that I don't agree with the most.
Music education, school performances, right?
Yeah.
Which.
So to answer to your question, while we sort where the language is specifically, yes, to your question, anything is co-extracurricular, this would be extended to.
Okay.
And so you meant that it doesn't specifically state in that thought, yeah, I just don't remember where.
Well, the second and the last paragraph, it does, it would then school-sponsored activities, a school can restrict distribution, credit limitation, is reasonable, really, to a legitimate distribution concern.
There you go. And so we, we would, that would be moving in our hand if there was a concern. That would, that's specific to distribution.
Yeah, that's, yep, that's.
To be cleaner, just add in, in addition, make this a seriation decision, that's a good condition.
I think so. And so we're saying in classroom comma school comma or district's curriculum? And/or?
And/or co-extracurricular.
Yeah. Is that clear? Yeah.
Can I just co-extracurricular, basically? School, school sponsor, is what you said, yeah.
I didn't, the, the appeal, it says DPI is the final arbiter on something like this, is what we have, or to our policies, correct? I'm just thinking of the, the current political environment and the fact that we may end up with, as long as we have it, that we go to DPI. That's, yeah, at least we have a place to go, just sort of, you know what I'm saying?
Okay. Sarah, who made the motion, do you want to revise your motion to?
I would, yes, I would move to approve with the revision.
Oh, second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Carly, to approve policy 381, religion in the classroom with the noted revision. Roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Yeah?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Alright, Sarah, last one, consider revisions to board policy 434.1, release time for religious instruction.
This was just a review, hopefully did update and make sure we had all our cost references that were needed. So no changes.
I would approve.
Oh, I have a question to first. I have lots of questions. So you could ask. Okay, so question one is why, why do we say absent from school at least 30 minutes, but not more than 180 minutes?
Sixty minutes?
I'm sorry, yes, 60 minutes and not more than 180. Like, why do we need the at least 60? Like, what's the rationale there? So like, if the church is in town and they have, they go to a thing, I don't know, and they're gone a half an hour, it doesn't count? Towards this, do we only count it if it's at least 30 minutes, or 60? I think you said 30, but I mean 60. So I don't, I don't understand the at least part.
We could go back and look to see if we can find the minutes from January of 2001 as to why, because this is existing language.
Yeah.
And we'd be having to do some research if it's still available, as to why the board elected to do that back in the day. I don't have any answers for you unless.
I do not have any.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, so if it's like, if it's like a requirement, like part of the legalese, like, it, it doesn't count if it's, if it's less than 60 minutes, it can't be used, that would be my one, well, that's one question. My other question would be, principals keep a record and then we send that to.
Can I ask your first question?
Yes.
In a state statute language.
Okay, it's just one of those things that they put in there that makes no sense. Good, it's like when they don't use the right.
Oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't a four-hour log search. One box, we have to link it.
So, okay, that's number one. So does the statute also say that the principal has to keep this log of kids who are doing this?
One, the police folders, I just lost it. Sorry.
Sorry, I don't need to go look at the statute.
Yeah, the principal of the school, right, attended, supervisor, such, religious instruction shall report monthly to the principal of the school, early attended, the names of people who attended, legally the religious instruction. The school will. Your question was, does the principal need to track a log?
Yeah, like, what, why are we logging it? What's the log for? Like, it's in Infinite Campus, so why does the principal also keep a log?
That may be antiquated language, assuming that the log is somewhere that, that, we go back to the policy.
And I don't know, maybe we don't have, like, religious excuses as a dropdown in Infinite Campus, but it seems like extra busy work if we're already having to track stuff in Infinite Campus, like, what do we need an extra log for?
So we, I told the first sentence?
I'm talking about the.
Principals should keep records?
Yes.
Or at least, the, our principals are, are attendance officers, so it's not necessarily a physical log, it's just their job to record and know where kids are.
But like, at the high school, we have an attendance person, so it's not the principal who's actually doing that?
I think it's more kind of, it's not, but direct work, or so the principal's in charge of keeping track of kids.
Log is.
It says they shall keep the records, so my brain immediately just imagined them writing a log.
The record is.
Okay.
It's, it's in campus for any attendance.
Okay. And then, I don't underst, oh, it's not, the, the last sentence in that paragraph said, the board or designee may deny release time to students who are absent from religious instruction or school after requesting the leave. Nowhere in here did we say they have to request the leave, so how do we deny the leave? When does it come to the board, or our designee to deny this leave, and where, where, who's the designee, and?
It's your official agent, which is the superintendent, who in turn then works with their principals. So that again, also appears to be in.
It's in there.
In, in state statute as well.
This is weird.
Yeah, so I mean, if a student is skipping class, religious instruction, you can say, sorry, you can't go anymore.
Got it.
That's how I interpret that.
I mean, that's kind of what I thought, but then the way it's worded, I'm like, how does it even get to the board?
Good question.
Like.
So let's say a parent were to say, Steve, I, I hear you, but I'm gonna try to appeal it to the Board of Education, then it would automatically come to you and you all in care of whether or not you would.
Because it would follow our regular, like, we don't agree with the situation.
The statute does say the school will work with united provision, please find the people who are absent themselves from religious instruction, so it's more than that, which.
And I assume that these minutes, hours, whatever, they fall under their 10 days? So like, if they're gone for 60 minutes, then we do our calculation, if that is 60 to 90, whatever the percent, or I looked it up even today to try to, but they do count against their 10 days, they don't get like extra.
Medical stays.
So it's different than like medically excused.
Right, so this is one underlying theme, which is, which is the compulsory attendance school law. Whether or not it counts against the parent's time, I'd have to go back and double-check. I guess it probably does, but if it's one hour a week, it's not gonna, it's not gonna equate to, you know, the, the.
Right, I was just, as I read it, it was just a question that I'm, I'm like, because I know you can, like, if it's a, the day of college visit, it doesn't count towards your 10 days, if you got your medical note, it doesn't count towards your 10 days, so I'm just like, trying to know where that falls in.
This is one of those policies that we don't attack too very much.
Never will use it, yes, it's my time here.
Are those records considered part of a student's private record?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions? The only one I had on the heels of being this question about the board involvement, so it just skips right to the board? Can the principal say, sorry, you've been, you don't have proof that you're showing up for this, I'm not releasing the time for you? Correct, so it would follow due process and a progressive approach, which would mean, yes, it would typically go to the assistant principal first, and if it's a secondary student, if the family was displeased with that decision, then it would go to the principal. If they were displeased with that, then it would go to the director of school services. And if they're displeased, then go up to the superintendent, to the board, and then ultimately, I'd have to look to see if the board's decision is final, or if the Department of Public Instruction had an opportunity to weigh in, I just don't know the actual details. All the while, we would not implement any kind of truancy piece, unless, of course, this was part of a much larger pattern of discernment, sense of making someone's life miserable while they have the process.
I started a religion council in school. No, we would just do that, no, we just.
You only get. You only get one hour up to a hundred and eighty minutes per week.
I don't.
That's it.
That's all you can skip.
I, I may not to belabor, but as I read it, like, my interpretation was, a student could be out for three hours every single week of the school year, be covered under this policy and not necessarily penalized for missing school because I read it, I read it as like a, that is substituting for an educational time there. Is that?
That's, that's correct, after three hours per week, that doesn't mean that the student isn't the whole of the work that was done during their absence. Still be held responsible for completing the work.
Right, okay. And it's not just even once per week, right? They could go an hour, three times.
Because.
That's what, yeah, at least sixty would come though.
Right.
Because then I would say, if you do thirty minutes, it doesn't.
Right, so you couldn't be gone thirty minutes every day.
Right.
But now, that's, now it does make sense.
So this policy doesn't have any changes yet? It's, it's a review, good review. Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Motion to bring it back.
Do I get to retract my motion first, or is my stand? Because we didn't make any changes.
We didn't make any changes. I just jumped discussion.
I'll second it. All right, motion by Adam, seconded by Sarah to consider revisions to board policy four thirty four point one, release time for religious.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Carly, yes, I'm also a yes. Sarah, thank you guys. Do you not believe we have decisions in the comments?
No.
Number nine, future agenda item? Did anyone want to talk about? Right here, I'm just letting you know.
President, may I just, I remind the board as well as audience members who may be listening, March seventeenth, I think will be a really important meeting, and then we'll also get a chance to, in addition to representing our art students, visit with Bray Architects to provide a status report of the committee's good work. We meet again this Thursday morning from ten to noon, and if you're interested in participating in those visits, by all means, let me know. If you could let me know forty-eight hours in advance, just simply because I would need time to notice the meetings.
Any other meetings to highlight?
Well, yeah, so we have a couple of meetings on the, on the list, just as a further reminder, as Mr. Schlumpen sloppily suggested, that there will not be a Buildings, Grounds and Transportation meeting on March the twenty-fourth, but because we're in the throes of a legislative season, we felt it was important to still hold a community and legislative engagement meeting on the night of the twenty-fourth. That will also be held online by three p.m. Thank you.
All right, we're ready to make a motion to adjourn.
So I'm okay.
Motion by Lisa, seconded by Carly to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
Please, I had to, that's what they, I always take the first.
No, whatever, we, we're gonna do a virtual.
Oh, perfect, because I, I was gonna check, maybe it was the, one, it says in person, rotate in person. I know. Yes, because they don't realize how much they actually have to do.